Let's call the zoning commission meeting to order for February 6th. We have, Derek is not here, I don't, anybody hear from him? Is he planning to be here? We'll appoint Mike to serve for Derek. In that case, it's six, yes. Approval of the minutes of the December 19th regular meeting. Does anybody have any comments or corrections? There are none, minutes stand as. No public hearings, no old business. We have new applications. First two are to schedule a public hearing. So we need to schedule a public hearing for application seventeen oh one. And I think we should schedule that for our March 6th meeting. Somebody will make an application, or make a motion to that effect.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we set a public hearing for our meeting, for application seventeen oh one. For, is it Tuesday, well Monday?
Monday.
March 6th. At seven o'clock? What else do you want in those motions? If not, okay.
Any second?
Second.
Second by Jerry. Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Who was that reference to?
Pardon?
Is that a reference to People's Choice?
No. This was... I'm sorry, yes it was. It's a public hearing for the People's Choice.
That's what I was there for.
Okay. Sorry.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Kevin, you can have your new alternate?
Ah, sorry. A little late.
That's okay.
Here you are. Tom Kizavat, hi.
Yeah, Tom Kizavat. An attorney now, hey. Good, welcome.
That's what you need.
Welcome, no, it's fine.
We do need a plan, fine.
No control over?
Not that kind of.
Okay. The next is an application for a public, or for a one-day special exception. We need to schedule a public hearing for March 6th. Do you have a motion to do that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, regarding application seventeen oh two. We'd like to set a public hearing for Monday, March 6th at seven.
I'll second.
Second by Jackie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to see if the commission would be interested in requesting the selectmen to waive the fees on this particular application. We're working toward avoiding the $350 that it takes to file a special exception under our current rules. And in our new regs, we hope to reduce that. But this is like the fifth year that they've paid that, and it comes right out of their fees, or the money that they're raising, so. I'd be in favor of asking the selectmen to waive the fees for this. Do you agree with that?
I agree with it.
Do they have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that, we're kind of out of order here. Can we do that now?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we have our chairman send a letter to the board of selectmen requesting that the application fee of $290 for the, from Barbara Foley, for her nonprofit event be waived.
Second.
Oh, hold on a second.
Oh, sorry.
Just, Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, are you, are you recommending to support a request that the applicant would actually bring forward to the board of selectmen? Or the chairman brings it?
I think the chairman's going to bring it forward.
And we waive the filing fee as well?
If now filing on the land records is fee charged by the town clerk.
Right. Okay. Any further discussion?
So I was second to that.
Second?
Somebody was.
Yep.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay, thank you, we'll take care of that. Okay, we have application seventeen oh three. We have a staff report. And we have a recommendation by the DRB. Do we have a staff report?
Actually, just for clarity, Mr. Chairman, the staff report. We're going back and forth on. In your package, you have a staff report from Jeff Shad, the town engineer. And also in your package, you should have a report from Tom Clid, assistant town planner. And both of those reports, there is a request for additional information, seeking clarity of a few items that run from site layout to drainage. Terry Han is here this evening representing the applicant. And I'm sure she may have something to add with regards to that. But our recommendation this evening is ultimately for the commission to table the application, to give the applicant adequate time to respond primarily to the town engineer's concerns. Terry Han is aware of those, and will be working with the town engineer to clarify those issues.
Okay, Terry, do you have?
No. The cemetery is fine with that, there's just some additional information that was wanted on the plans, which we'd be happy to provide. And we can submit those and attend the next meeting. If you'd like, I'd be happy to walk you through it now, in case you have any other questions.
I have a question.
Go.
Again, my recommendation would be that Terry Han presents the project to you tonight, because if you have a question, it would be good to ask that question this evening, so it can be applied prior to your March 6th meeting.
I have no problem with, Terry Han, principal LED APC with the land planners for the project. The cemetery owns several pieces of land on this drawing. Hot Meadow Street is here, Langhill Road is here. What's known as the ancient part of the cemetery is located here. This is off that ancient side up, up by the mausoleum. There's a big open grass area, we're going about in that particular area here. The, this orientation, up here's the mausoleum. This is the upper road that goes past the family mausoleums, and then down the hill to Hot Meadow Street over here. This is the big, the big open meadow here, there's a stone wall, crossing road this way. The proposal is to put in, basically, there's a slope that goes from the mausoleum down the hill. We're going to flatten this out and put a retaining wall and a columbarium wall located here. Just a couple terms of art, mausoleum is a structure where you have above-ground body interments. Columbarium refers to the smaller niches for cremains. So that's what a columbarium is. So the columbarium wall located here, and a pavilion with columbarium niches around the base, it's an open-air pavilion, would be located in this area. All on access with the mausoleum for a more formal setup, which is typical for the ancient part of the cemetery. That's what the pavilion looks like, copper roof. These are the individual niches located at the base of the columns. The columbarium wall basically takes these and just runs them with the contours down at the base of that hill.
So the pavilion has columbarium?
Right, it has niches inside the columbarium, but you would have a covered area to have a service potentially, you know, of some kind.
Do you have a section through that wall, the retaining wall?
No, that's one of the questions that they asked.
Okay.
I'd be happy to do that, yeah. It's a, what it is, is up at the top here, we're about 260, elevation 260. It'll go a little bit higher, and then it goes down to 255. So it's about six and a half feet.
So it's access on the back side?
Right, you'd access this way, access this way. This is the face facing the hill. You don't go from here to here, there's a wall, there's a fence on the top of the retaining wall.
That's where the iron fence is.
Correct. So you'll be able to park up here potentially and look, but you won't, you'll be high, columbarium wall faces the downhill side. And then you'll be able to walk, this is handicap accessible, this is a 5% come around through here, or pull up this way and walk along the face.
So there's no steps through?
No, no. We did that a couple times in our various different alternatives that we looked at, but the cemetery felt it was more important to have a handicap accessible walk.
Yeah.
The whole way. We even did it shorter in a couple places, that get it at a little bit, you know, 8.3% with ramp. And given, we're talking about grieving people potentially, the lesser the slope, the better off we are. So we pulled it back a little bit, made a little bit more, you know, fill over in this area, but felt that that was much more important and conducive to better use. This road is steep already, so when you park here, you want to be flat. So it's basically steep, and then everything runs with the contours across this area.
So there's niches on both sides?
No, there's only niche on the lawn side.
And how, does it go all the way around?
No, it only is this lighter color here. Because I'm picking up grade, I'm doing a bunch of stuff, the retaining wall actually goes all the way back, but the niches do not. Because these are all prefab units, they come together, so you build the retaining wall, you get these prefab units, they're concrete inside that are then faced with granite. And they, you connect them to the wall so that everything stays in place, and that way, they're not the retaining part, they're just basically the face.
When you go back to the pavilion, is that inside and outside?
Yes. Yes. You can see niches here, niches here, correct. They're thicker.
What's the total capacity that you're adding?
It's, I think by the time we figure it out. It was, it was somewhere, what was the number? It's somewhere around 1,000-ish, you know, it's like 600 and somewhere, and it's 30, 30 per those sections, and they're 13.
390.
390 plus.
390 there.
Yeah, so maybe it was 600 is I think what we're talking about.
And they have a last tally?
They're anticipating about 10 years.
10 years?
Are you looking for space or?
Yeah, it's getting older, you know?
You're shocked.
Well, it's a little, it's a little hard to predict, things are changing in the industry, so that we're getting a much higher percentage of.
Right, I understand that.
Cremations than burials, but a lot of people still like to, they'll take the cremains and put them into the earth. I think what we're seeing is, there was a real push to sort of scatter ashes in various different places, but then you don't have anywhere to come back to. You know, you don't have anywhere where your name is inscribed, so this is becoming much more popular.
Is it possible that it would eventually wrap around the whole retaining wall, or no?
I don't anticipate that. I'm taking up, I'm taking, taking up too much grade on the sides. And then this, these things like to be flush, flush to the ground, square, you know, it's a, it's a unit.
It looks very nice.
Did you get an answer on the, on the roof material?
It's copper.
It is copper?
Yep. Yeah, I apologize for any confusion, but they're definitely committed to copper. They like you copper and the granite, the cemetery is longevity, it's all about longevity and what it looks like, and this cemetery is very much so classical architectural.
So how big is that whole thing, dimensionalized?
Yep. Actually, it says it on something that I handed out to you.
It's on one of the charts here. It's 31 feet.
It's 31 feet, you know, obviously circular, so it's a diameter of 31 feet, and it's 23 feet high. So I'll put the dome. So some of the questions that were asked, three in the staff review, there's an existing pull-off located here that would be removed. There's an existing four-foot-wide stone-dust path that is approximately in this location, not going to stay until we don't need it anymore. It was, it's just a, it's a nice level walkway across here. I think that that'll stay for a little while, eventually it'll get taken out, but for right now, we're leaving that in. Those, and then the couple of, that was the three comments from the staff report. And then in Jeff's review, he was asking for some additional, he wanted to see just what you asked for, cross-section through here. Was asking, there's a hedge facing that's located in the grass here. Our, what our intent was, that it's going to be lifted up out of that ditch, and everything will drain along the side of this into that, because that's how it goes right now. That just needs some more clarification on the drawings. There's a couple of little things that they asked for, wasn't anything, the only thing that I don't think that we will respond positive to, he recommended that all our slopes go to three-on-one. That's the case over here, but in this area here, we would recommend staying at two-in-one, so that I don't keep taking the trees down in order on that side. Right now, we have a guy rail, and opened it up flatter around the walkway, but I would prefer to leave it at a two-in-one slope, which is basically what it's doing at the moment, rather than go to a three-on-one slope. Because otherwise, I just have to take that much more trees and that much more disturbance.
So can I have you seen from that one house near Library Lane, or what's the?
This house is very, is low.
Yeah, down the hill.
Yeah, it's down the hill, and it's got a big slope up. And a long time ago, when we were in front of this commission, when we were doing the wall and some, taking some of these trees down, they used the slope up to a certain point, actually crossed the property line at the moment, and so there was some back and forth, and everything's all fine, no issues. But this wall now basically blocks everything that they see upward.
Is there any plans for the space between the wall and the pavilion?
At the moment, it would, potentially it could be burials.
Which is why you wouldn't connect them.
Right. Well, I mean, we tried to originally, but at this point, it's easier, what we probably end up doing is doing something more this way, so that you could, you could actually get the wall from one to the other, but it's, right now, that's, I think we're just trying to get a sense of what we can actually do out there, and how that would work.
What's your timeframe?
Well, as soon as we get an approval, the, these are all contract pieces, so the company that we're working with, it just starts to fabricate and build.
So it is funded?
Yes, yes. Yeah. The scope, the scope of the project is reduced from some of the original conversations that I had with staff, because they wanted to make sure they funded it.
We approved the mausoleum originally.
Yes.
There was a talk of actually mentioning three of them.
Yeah, there is room for two more units here, so, and then that's, that's how this is all set up, so there's one, two more in this area here. And I think they do anticipate building one of those, so there is still demand for the mausoleum part, but the cremains part, you know, has become so much more than it ever was.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much, Terry.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
So I think it sounds like answering Jeff's questions would pretty much cover everybody else's questions as well.
Okay.
Great. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Motion to table, are we up?
I make a motion to table application number seventeen oh three.
Number two.
March 6th meeting.
Second it.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. On to new and ongoing projects. Jamie, we, think about the workforce housing moratorium, is it still something we should be looking, making a change to?
I can bring that up, Mr. Chairman, I have a suggestion, given the time and also the agenda. I make a recommendation, and you will bear with me, that we take up workforce housing moratorium first, before we go into regulations.
Okay.
Is that a?
Good point.
With regards to the workforce housing moratorium, there was a question on whether or not a project that has been previously approved could apply under the moratorium for change to their site plan, associated with changing housing type. And this is specific to the Hoskins Road development, where there is a mix of apartment, single-family, and single-family attached. They approached staff and asked if there was a possibility to modify their site plan to eliminate the apartments. And construct 15 or 16 single-family, either detached or detached housing units, instead of the apartment.
Which would change the density.
Which would change the density, there's 28, 24 apartment.
Wow.
24 units in the apartment, and they would be going down to 20, excuse me, 15 or 16. That would also potentially change the number of assisted or affordable units from 22 down to, or we'll say 22 or 21 down to 19 or 20. So it would be the elimination of potential two units. I advise them that my reading of the regulation is that there is no ability for anyone to apply under the workforce housing code. And the only way to amend the previously approved site plan is to submit an application under the workforce housing code for an amendment to a previously approved regulation. And the way the moratorium is written is that is prohibited. The only thing they can do is submit information or modifications to their site plan associated with the approval. The final landscape plan needing to be submitted, that's where they can submit that landscape plan. But that landscape plan needs to reflect the housing types and locations that were submitted. The code also doesn't allow anyone to submit an application to modify the moratorium language. So the only one who can modify the moratorium language is the commission. Now, you adopted it for a reason, and I guess the question is, is would you potentially entertain a modification to the existing language? To allow, let's say, revision to the language that would permit a previously approved workforce housing plan or site plan to be modified via an application to the commission?
I would think you just need to tell them you've got approval. Obviously, a previous question.
Yeah. So that's the question, if we.
So would you need to draft this and go for the whole public hearing? Do they need this before July?
There was, I, there was a discussion that the moratorium is valid until July. The result of the moratorium could result in a modification to the zone, or, you know, if you go to the other discussions, the elimination of the zone, until it is reformatted and, let's say, maybe more thoughtfully located throughout town. So it's not generally available to every property in the town assumed there that it is associated with locational based, you know, within X number of feet of new town or estate route. I don't think you perhaps ever intended a large workforce housing project to occur in a northwest corner of town, in Fire County. And maybe you didn't, but I wasn't involved in those discussions.
And their response was they do not want to wait until July?
I think they would prefer.
It's February.
To not wait until July. Again, if we, kind of two aspects administratively, you could ask staff to come up with the language, authorize the chairman to submit an application on your behalf. Do that in a timely manner to potentially have a public hearing at your March 6th meeting. Or on March, you know, or as a commission, you want to see the language, you want to talk about it. We could have that language prepared for you at your March 6th meeting. Then you would potentially decide to submit an application to yourself. You would schedule a meeting in April, and make a decision in April. You can only meet once in February and once in March.
I would be comfortable with them framing the language and presenting it.
Yeah, I think if we want to do it as a tradition, it would be possible. If we were to ask to try to get a public hearing open on March 6th, we would still have the ability to see the language at that meeting.
Absolutely.
And make our public comments.
Staff would have to have that language available when the application was logged in by our office, so. In essence, we would have to have the language in the next week or so, in order to have it on file and do the public hearing notices.
You think that can be done?
I think Mike can have that.
Good answer.
I would be able to prepare the language for you. And again, we have, I would author that language on your behalf, I would run it by counsel, because again, we want to make sure the wording is clear, that it's for something that was previously approved by the commission. That you would allow for a modification of that site plan, which, you know, could include the reduction or reformatting of the units.
Anybody, did you agree with that approach?
I'm not really in favor of it, I'm going to be right up front. You know, this developer was asked more than once, is he sure about the apartments? And a few of us that were members at the time we bought this project made it clear to accommodate these apartment buildings that were being built in town, and they wanted to go ahead with that. And I don't know, is this a slippery slope opening up something that's closed right now? You know, what's, to prevent somebody else next time we have the moratorium coming and saying, oh, you need to, you know, we got to rethink this, and we want to grace a pass on this. I think, I think we're waiting until July is not unreasonable. They're certainly not moving on that project up there very fast, but I can see why. It's just my personal opinion, anybody else, don't know how you guys feel about?
I think everybody is sensing a community concern with the number of apartments that we've all seen. And if something had moved, so few of them, probably we're going to receive it well.
But is the difference between February and July going to create that he's not going to build out another section and wait till the moratorium is lifted and then come into his application change?
Staff had, if I can, Mr. Chairman, again, this request came in from the property owner. I think Mr. Post brings up a good question with regards to the validity of something you have on the books now, that, you know, you passed the moratorium, and the legislature allows you to adopt zoning regulations. There's been case law that allows towns to adopt reasonable moratorium. There's been case law that allows towns to adopt reasonable moratoriums to serve a public interest. And you adopted a reasonable moratorium to evaluate your existing workforce housing zones and determine the validity of them as time passes. But eventually, only argument could be is you passed this moratorium for a specific reason. Someone could argue, why are you relaxing it for one, but not relaxing it for applications? I think maybe a conservative approach for this is developing the language doesn't necessarily cause any harm or questions. It may be viable that council be available for you at that meeting where you discuss this, or council weigh in about the question of if we're... If we said we needed a moratorium, we needed a moratorium to deal with this. If the nature of modifying that language brings in a question of the validity of the entire moratorium, that's probably an important question to ask. And if council says, I would caution you on changing any aspect of the moratorium because it may bring in the question of validity of the entire moratorium, I would recommend that you, it's your application. You will draw your application. But if council comes in and says, look, it doesn't jeopardize the moratorium, then it can move forward. And as a commission, you can determine the validity of it by discussion and vote.
Well, why wouldn't we just consult with council first before we have to go through all this work of drawing this up?
I mean, I'm just...
Well, because if we're going to do it, because the guy wants to go ahead and do his development, then delaying it for a couple of months is a cost then.
In their building, it seems.
But what I'm saying is, if they call council this week and say, well, we're on this body, have you had any discussions with council on this?
No, none of them has. This came up just this last night.
It's not Bob anymore, who's in the gun.
Bob DeCrescenta.
Oh, yeah, he may say, you may, you should do that. That would, you know, it's going to save everybody a lot of work here. I mean, that's just my...
Well, we're going to do that anyway. As part of the drafting, he's going to go, he's going to go to town attorney.
See what I'm saying?
Yeah, so maybe we revisit this at work.
Go to council first.
Yes, yes.
I mean, if I could think aloud. Mr. Ryan, I think the discussion is leading me to to have staff have a discussion with Bob DeCrescenta regarding the validity of amending the existing moratorium to allow a site plan to be modified under the language.
Yes.
If Bob DeCrescenta says that is ill-advised, I will bring that back to the chairman and perhaps not proceed with any writing of any language. If council says it's, I don't see any issues with revising the language, staff would prepare the language as an application. And then as a commission, you still have to have that hearing, and you still have to vote on it and set an effective date. You could, you know, the language is just a placeholder in an application process. You still can absolutely discuss the merits of the validity of changing it and your feelings on the change.
Twice in March.
Do we meet twice in March? But Mike mentioned we do meet twice in March. But if you make the decision on March 6, it's really tough to do the hearing process and scheduling it a two-week timeframe.
I would be in favor of getting Bob's opinion first before we go any further either way.
Is that a good idea?
Just for clarity, staff asked the question of whether the commission, if it's okay for them to modify the language in this scenario to allow a prior applicant to apply to the commission for an amendment to the site plan, is that okay, or does it jeopardize the integrity of the moratorium? If the answer to that is, it does not jeopardize the integrity of the moratorium, staff would work with the chair and council to come up with the language that an application would be submitted and a hearing would be scheduled for March 6. We'll try to do that.
Sure.
Bringing in council, sometimes there's some little bit parts to Bob's schedule. Our intent would be to do that so that we could hold the date of March 6 for a hearing.
Do we have agreement in this? Do we need a motion?
I'm comfortable approaching council.
But do we need a motion to set public hearing?
You would need... The chair controls the agenda. If you feel more comfortable making a motion to allow staff to work with council to discuss the possibility of submitting an application for an amendment to the existing moratorium and schedule a public hearing upon positive guidance from council, if that may be appropriate.
Go ahead.
Do we need to make a motion of what Jamie just said?
Did you get a laugh?
Record.
What Jamie?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mike seconds it. All in favor? All right. Okay.
Thanks for that word.
Now, we're duly authorized as your staff to speak to council on this matter.
Okay.
That was a good idea, Jerry.
Okay. Under regulations, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We're done with regulations.
We're done with... We're just beginning on regulations.
Screen blink, though.
As we're going through, and I want to say, um... From my perspective, my discussion end of this is probably about five or 10 minutes. And then it's, I want to say, your determination of how much time we spend on this, this evening. I don't know. Mike has a soccer game tonight.
Fine. This is far more important than that, for sure.
If I had a soccer game, I'd be pushing you to go quicker a little bit. What's come up in a number of instances in town is, we have our residential zones. We have an R160, we have an R80, we have an R40, we have an R30, an R25, and an R15. We also have an R80 open space and an R40 open space. So we have a lot of zones in town. One of the things that's a little complicated to some of the applicants is you call your rural, your R160, 160. So people look at it like, ooh, 160,000 square feet for a building lot. No, it's a four-acre zone. So there's a reference. So you have R15, right? 15,000 square foot zone. R25, 25,000 square foot zone. R40, there's a 40,000 square foot zone. R80, what's the R80 zone? For minimum lot size.
It's not too...
It's not 80,000 square feet.
Really?
It's two acres.
Oh, my God.
So R160 is not 160,000 square feet. It's a four-acre zone. We actually had one applicant make the mistake in an R80 zone to do 80,000 square foot lots on a subdivision, which we had to inform them that it's a two-acre zone, and you need 87 to 50 on all your lots. So my mindset on some of the lots is, we'll have a rural residential 1, that'll be a four-acre zone. A rural residential 2, that'll be a two-acre zone. Then you'll have an R40, and R... And then, when we're talking about square footage, we'll have the 30, the 40, the designation. When we're talking about acres, we'll have a rural residential zone 1 and a rural residential 2. What's the difference the two requires? Four acres, the one requires two acres. So a little bit changed, but I think right now it's a little bit confusing. And I don't want to call it R4 because someone may think it's a 4,000 square foot zone versus a four-acre zone. That's kind of some of the confusion on the lot area. There's kind of a little more confusion on what you can do on a lot. So I have this representative photo, PowerPoint slide up here that basically shows the R25. So the perimeter line is representative of what the lot would look like, which would be a 25,000 square foot lot with a 35-foot front yard setback, 15-foot side yard setback, 25-foot rear yard setback. And again, back to the side. Representative of how a house would sit on that lot, the primary structure, a porch, an accessory building, shed, or a garage. Now, I know some of the commission members are newer, and some of the commission members have a little bit of historical knowledge. When you wrote the regulations, is it your intent that the front, side, and rear yards cannot have any structures in them? Kind of building decks, porches, garages, pools? Any, is that a, we'll say, a correct assumption?
That would be my assumption.
On ZVA, it was just to give a buffer. Their interpretation was to give you the buffer from your neighbor and vice versa, without somebody putting the shed right on the line. But not to say it couldn't be in the surrounding area.
That deals with structures.
Yeah.
All right, so I want to say, in most zoning codes, it's pretty clear that... I probably should have shaded that box, but I may. Actually, now, R25, so if I want to build a structure, I have to build it in the light blue center box outside of all the setbacks. Can I build a bluestone patio up to the property line?
No structure.
I'm asking, I'm asking? These are questions as we write language. So from a lot utilization, because again, we got building utilization, which is in the light blue. So from a lot utilization, and again, the way I'm structured it, so if I put a pool in the back right corner of this lot, I could then do a bluestone patio and a 25-foot side rear yard setback and right up to the property line on the side yard setback.
Sure.
So that's okay.
Because your driveway can go right on the property line.
Well, that'll be another question.
Great.
Okay. So, and again, the neighbor who lives over here on the right, whose house may be 12 feet away, will go over here. So house 12 feet, someone can have a lawn chair and a bluestone structure. I mean, it's at great. So we'll say the cookout can occur inches away from the property line.
But I think it would be no different than if you took a lawn out and put peacetime in.
Right, it could be grass, and you could have a beach chair in the back.
And they're small lots.
You could put a volleyball net right on the side yard and stove, play volleyball right next to the property line. And again, I'm just...
Yeah. This is what you're getting.
Guys aren't crazy, or anything. You're, you have good responses. Driveways. Should a driveway be allowed within inches of the property line?
I thought there was a regulation to the fact that it was supposed to be not a setback, but not within inches because there's something to do with maintenance and like plowing and that kind of stuff as well. But maintaining a driveway within inches of somebody else's property.
And a lot of, and again, I didn't do these, you know, they're here representative, but if we size these out, you know, we take, we'll just pretend we're in a R40 zone. And most municipalities in, say, an R40 zone, they would say a driveway can be located in a side yard, front yard, and even a rear yard, but no closer than 10 feet from a bought-in property. And that 10 feet, in essence, gives people the ability to maintain their driveway, actually physically install their driveway, provide some grading if necessary, and also store snow when a 10-foot shelf, without putting, you know, I don't know if everybody remembers the snowblower commercial, where they're throwing it over the property lines. So if we came up with a regulation, and again, what we're trying to do in this regulation revision is reorganize and also clarify. So if the regs are silent right now, if Robin Newman or Mike, if someone comes up to us and says, and we see a site plan, and Robin's going to issue a zoning permit, and the driveway is, you know, right on the property line, we could say it's not a good idea to do that. There's some discussion in the regulations that perhaps it shouldn't be there. Would you be more comfortable as a commission if there was regulatory guidance on where a driveway should be?
What's the problem with that? Yeah, no, no, go ahead.
Not on my property.
That's what I was going to say.
There's no way you would have anywhere to build than R15.
And that's the discussion.
That's what I was just going to say. R15 and R25 have nowhere to go. So I feel...
Mine's right on the property line, and I couldn't put a house in there.
I will say, working previously at West Hartford, they had a setback for driveways. It was two feet.
Going in with a stupid little...
That was going with the R6 zone, you know, 6,000 square foot lots where everyone's on top of each other.
Yeah.
So it could be leaning.
So again, it's one of those things that we may... It's hard because a lot of the R15s and the 25s in town are historic to the town. So it may be one of those things where we don't necessarily look at that small issue. But suppose there's a... And there aren't many of them. A five-acre piece left in one of these zones, and they were developing it from scratch. You can write a regulation that any new development or redevelopment or resubdivision of a lot in the zone, and they go through the subdivision process, has to adhere to the following standards. So you, you know, the historic, the ED housing, the stuff in Terraville, doesn't all become non-conforming uses, and all the driveways are non-conforming. But Donna, in your scenario, if you, if you're on a small lot and that driveway was 10 feet wide... Just bear with me here. If this was the driveway, and you had, and your lot was next to it, and we had a mirror image of this, and you have lived in that scenario for 40 years, if someone came to get a zoning permit and paved the remaining grassed area, would you be okay with that up to the property line?
So your neighbor, her neighbor?
Right. You're used to, you know, your driveway's over here. You're used to this six, about there, about six. I tried to split the difference in the side yard setback. So you're used to green space and landscaping between you and your neighbor. If they came in for a zoning permit to pay, to remove that six foot of landscaping and pave right to the property line, is that something you're concerned about?
That's going on right now.
Well, it would be, it would be right up next to my driveway, which is exactly on the property line. Right.
All right, and that's the difficulty of trying to...
It is.
Yeah.
And again, as we, as we solve one problem, I also don't want to create another. That's why I wanted to have this conversation with you this evening.
So I think you brought up a good point because the installation and maintenance could cause a contractor to infringe on some of its property line if there wasn't a buffer.
So we may look at a reasonable buffer, and maybe it's a few feet. Maybe it's four feet. On your, probably would be four feet on the abutter. And some of what I'm concerned is if you have this historic, this driveway's here, and there's a mirror image of this, and you have 12 feet between them. Most of the houses were built before, you know, four car families, and everyone's always looking to add that extra space. And in some instances, it creates an issue.
I think it's easier than to... I think it's easier that you get to the bigger lots.
Yeah.
With the new construction, I totally agree, with an R40 or bigger, those subdivisions, we can put those kind of, oh, 10 feet or what have you, but on the R15 and the R25...
So, my driveway isn't paved. If I were, if you were to say, okay, you need a buffer, and I came in for permit to pave my driveway?
Nothing. If you had a 10-foot gravel driveway and it existed and you were just changing surface treatment?
Uh huh.
No issue.
No issue.
No issue. If you had a 10-foot driveway and we're proposing to repave it and make it 20 feet wide, then you were encroaching right up to your property, that, my question to you is, is that an issue that you foresee in town?
Widening my driveway?
If you have the roof.
Yeah.
If your neighbor did that. And again, before we go through it and I start to work these out, I'll have drawings, R15, R25, for all of the zones so you can actually see how it pertains, and we'll try and do a little more representative scale as we move up in the buffer setting.
Yeah, it's a pretty skinny house. That's a skinny house.
Well, again, frontage-wise, you only require 100 feet of frontage, so when you take away 12 and 12...
Maybe it's not skinny, maybe it's just long.
You have 76 left if you want to build 1,200 square feet. And what's interesting, in 100 feet, if you start building, you know, you got 12 and you do this originally in a historic nature, this would have only been a 12 to 14-foot wide garage, because in most times, again, my grandfather grew up in a manager's row mill, his manager, there were five managers' homes associated with the textile home, textile mill, sorry, and each one of the manager's homes had a garage, but it was up, it wasn't for a 1960 Buick, it was for a Model T. The Model T fit great in the garage. The 1960 Buick, you could get in, but I think you had to roll the window down and climb out the window, open the door. So, but you have these scenarios that exist in town.
Oh, yeah. I have that garage.
Okay, you have that garage. Now, your lawnmower, your lawnmower.
Yeah, right.
And most, I mean, this is the traditional law for mill housing.
Yeah.
Where this would have been the driveway to the back shed slash garage. The garages weren't up front.
No, that's what mine is.
And what about odd-shaped lots?
Odd being rectangular, triangular?
Yeah, other than rectangular, you have...
Bigger in the front, smaller in the back. Yeah.
Well, again, and maybe I'll draw some of those scenarios that regardless of the configuration, you still have a 35 front, and, you know, a triangular lot, you would probably debate that you would have a 35 front yard and two side yards.
Okay.
And those are things, we'll do those scenarios because some commissions will say, no, no, you got two rear yards with a triangular lot.
That's not fair.
And that, and we'll have that discussion so we make it clear to you what we're proposing in a graphic form that I agree with Donna, it's probably not fair on a triangular lot and in R15 zone.
That'd be awful.
To have that. The other issue that comes before a lot of commissions is you take this lot and you put a street on the right-hand side, that 35 feet becomes a 35-foot setback. On a side, you know, that 12 doesn't become 12.
That's awful.
It becomes 35.
So their lot is...
So potentially, what we can do is, I wouldn't make a recommendation that we change the front yard setback, but you could write language that states that...
The side yard is...
That when a lot sits on a corner lot, that the owner has to identify one of the frontages as the primary frontage.
Okay, that's fair.
And then the other road could be considered the secondary frontage, and you allow structures to be built within half of that setback.
Of that setback.
And it may not be the primary structure, it may be, in most instances, where we struggle on those corner lots is all the accessory structure.
Yeah.
You know, because the, most of the buildings were in place before the zoning structure changed and losing the purpose. We have the EB housing in the Terraville, so we're not always concerned about that primary structure moving. You know, if, on the R15 side, if that was the road in most historic natures, that house has already been placed there. But if I apply a new 35-yard front yard setback on the R15 road, that means the house is in the front yard setback, which means that structure, nothing could be built in this corner. Well, historically, why couldn't a little shed be built in that corner? So the commission will be comfortable if we wrote a little bit of flexibility in a corner lot scenario? The second aspect is where can I keep things on my lot?
I've seen a lot of sheds now in the front of houses.
So, right now in Simsbury, this shed cannot, if this is the front, the porch establishes the front yard, not just setback, it also establishes a front yard placement. And in our regulations, it says that nothing can be built in front of, in essence, the primary residence. So even if I own a four-acre lot and my houses, I decide on my four acres to set my house 100 feet off the road, when I make that decision, I'm also making the decision that nothing can be built in front of my home as an accessory structure.
And the reason for that is the perfect field is the neighborhood.
Right.
And then you see the exceptions. The lot drops off, and so they say, well, I need to put a shed in front.
So a lot of the things, if we look historically, and Donna's neighborhood's one of them, that you have well-established street lines on. I'm just gonna transfer here for a second. And we were in Simsbury a few minutes ago and it decided to kick me out. I own an internal town, GI system's very slick with all the overlays of all the different zones.
Yeah, you can find out a lot.
Yes, sir, yeah, very useful.
So, I think, this is Simsbury, Oakwood Road, just west of Pop Meadow. And I think, I think the reg was originally intended that, you know, we have these well-established historic street lines, and that in this scenario, if you look on the other side of the street, here's the shed behind the house, shed behind the house, shed behind the house, and even here, there's an outbuilding behind the house. I think it's important to establish this front kind of line and not allow anything in the front yard. But where that also potentially impacts you... Just bear with me. And it should get clearer. We'll utilize this blurry bit. This is a rear lot. The house is towards the rear portion of the lot, it's about 400 feet off the road. Can they build a small barn in front of their house? Again, a regulation written to accomplish one thing in one area, is there a scenario that...
Is it visible to other people? I mean, I know that's not the great...
Not visible from the road, but it's one of those things, I apologize for getting booted.
I know.
It's going to be neighbors that don't see it.
And I'm not saying that they should get a different rule, but it looked like that parcel was very much removed from the street.
Thinking there are houses that are kind of in the woods that actually have the garage.
First.
First.
Yes, they do, yes.
I can't give you an example right now, I know I've seen...
No, but you're right, and especially if it is typically a two-acre lot or more, they do, they have that, and the way that the house is set is back further. Yeah. But again, so then do we go back to that not allowing, well, that's, well, the other thing is not allowing that in a R15 and R25 and R30 where it's right in your front yard, where everybody driving by is seeing the shed first. Now, if it's in a R40 or two-acre, maybe it's permissible.
But then still, I mean, there could be some of those lots that you don't want it in front of too.
On a two-acre though?
I can hear neighbors saying that's a problem.
Oh, you're connected now.
So that's because it's public. There's a seriously troubled connection, knowing from the town that I own this place.
I guess that design review I wore it on.
I don't know, Jamie, we were saying it's kind of hard because you put a lot on bigger lots.
Yeah, and again, you're...
The barn or the garage is technically in front of the house. It's setback from the road. Is it something where we have to do a case-by-case basis, or do we not allow it in a...
It's, again, it's one of those issues as we're going through the regulations and, you know, being here now for 14 months, we're becoming a little more conscientious of, you know, what's, what's come in the pipeline and... Here's a, here's a good property here at Wildwood and Moll, you know, this is an older state property. So here's the main house, here's the barn, here's another outbuilding. If this was the main house, could that not be the barn?
Right.
And across the street, here's the barn and here's the house. So what, what may have worked well in the R15, R25, R30, and even maybe in the R40, is it applicable to a rear lot, which could be X number of feet off a road, or in the, in the four-acre zone? Or should it be that a, I mean, my house is, I live in Hebron, my house is specifically placed 150 feet off the road.
Yeah.
Most of my neighbors are 40 feet off the road. We did that to push ourselves back so that when we utilized our back acreage, we were way behind everybody. So when I sit on my deck, I don't have to look left or right and wave at my neighbors. Even though we all have three-plus acres, we're still only 200 feet wide, so literally, you know, the developers, and we built our homes ourselves, bought a lot ourselves, but there were speculative construction and, you know, driveways cost more to push the house back. Grading costs more when you build a spec house, if I can build it closer and go for square footage, they did. So it's, you know, and the scenario here is if this person decided to push their house back, if someone built a really nice barn, does it impact that? And maybe it's the fact that, maybe it's a special permit if you want to build in front of your house in an R80 zone and you have some standards or some buffering, and then you do potentially take that on in a case-by-case.
I think we could probably do a standard for R15, R25, R30.
Right.
I really do.
I think it serves a, Donna, in your neighborhood, I think it absolutely serves a role and a purpose.
Yeah.
Because you, you know, you wouldn't want all these little carefree homes to start dropping down on Plank Hill Road and all of the streets, or Hazel Meadow, or all of those little developments. But there are other places that, you know, everyone's like, well, send them to ZBA, but ZBA has to determine there's a hardship, and the fact that someone wants a shed or a barn in front of their house is not a hardship on the Connecticut law, so...
So if we could give them that...
But historically here...
If we could give them how many feet to start...
There have been varying interpretations.
Yeah.
You know, one of the things I've tried to do is track...
No, the hardship is septic in the back, or you know what I mean, elevation, or something where they have to move it, not the shed.
Right, not, yeah.
But, the criteria.
So again, going back to our lot.
Sure.
You know, if we wrote something in here that's, you know, in the R15 and our smaller districts, I wouldn't make any recommendations, but maybe for a rear lot, we had Knott Brook, right?
Yeah.
Knott Brook had frontages on two roads. So the, you know, one was frontage proper, you know, here's a good example of the accessory unit we had. One of the lots was classically frontage proper, and the frontage proper was actually on Climax Road, and that's where the subdivision was approved, and that's where they met the frontage requirements. They also have alternative access off of Knott Brook. So you had a front yard and it might be you had a side yard. But depending on the placement of that house determines where a barn or a shed could be built. That was kind of an interior lot. It was, we'll say, 600-plus feet off of Climax Road, but only 100, 200 feet off of, off a, off a Knott Brook. Knott Brook, so I think we'll draw a couple of these scenarios for you to see what the implications are. And again, we may not change it now, but I want, these are the issues that are coming up before ZBA. And some scenarios too, I've written regulations in community for small sheds under 200 square feet, that they can be in half a side yard setback. That small structures can be, or, you know, if this is the shed and it's 200 square feet, maybe you can only have, a certain amount can intrude into that side yard setback, so it's not...
So you're not putting that structure right next to your neighbor?
May have a funky thing in Hebron that. I can build, I can put 200 square feet in half a side yard setback. So I could do a carefree building in half of a 25-foot side yard setback in my zone. But if I built a barn attached to it that was bigger, I then can't have a lean-to on it and a side yard setback. So it's, you know, I have to deal with rules too, so I could build a barn, but then I couldn't have a 100-square-foot lean-to, 10 by 10, in half the side yard setback. But I could build a 35-foot tall, within 10 by 20 shed, in half the side yard setback. So, you know, I'm a planner, but I also have to deal with rules too, that's the other side of me. And again, maybe that's a good rule, or someone determined that was a good rule, maybe I'll go to ZBA. My hardship is I need a lean-to. My hardship is I need a lean-to to keep my tractor in it, so we'll see how that, that plays. But again, some of the things, we, we get also issues of generators. Is it possible that a generator be placed in a side yard setback? Because again... No, all right, those will be discussed.
But I would say, yeah, but I would say yes, because in an R-15, where else are you going to put it?
Your basement.
A generator?
It doesn't work that way, that's a safety hazard.
Can a underground propane tank be placed in a side yard setback?
Again, I would say yes.
Propane tank being placed in a side yard setback?
Do they really stay outside?
Yeah.
Outside, outside, outside. So again, you know, these are issues that we get almost not daily, but we get these questions, and the way structures are written, a generator can't be located in a side yard setback.
And I don't think that's right for an R-15, for an R-25, you know, for the smaller ones that have no other place to put them.
Well, there's always another place to put them. It's usually a more expensive place.
Oh, no, I don't disagree with that.
But you don't want to be the guy next door that, you know, you have to put up the next door to your generator.
In most aspects, a Kohler generator, you know, full standby backup on a pad, it makes a lot less noise than, you know, the 4500 portable...
Absolutely, yeah, the kind you're sticking in your driveway?
I mean, it's interesting, in our neighborhood, when the power goes out, it's, you know, it sounds like go-kart racing. Because every generator gets pulled out and goes versus if everybody had a standby, you wouldn't hear as much. But those are the types of questions we're getting. So would the commission be comfortable if there was some relief for generators in, say, half a side yard setback?
Yeah.
I'd be okay with that.
Is that going to include language to bump it so people don't have to look at the box outside your visual...
That can include language?
Yeah, it should.
To the best that they can.
What you're saying, the neighbor not only has to listen to it now, now they're going to look at it really significantly.
But he's right, a central air condenser is 10 times louder than a windows cooler.
But they're right.
We'll, we'll carry that part.
The noise is that.
But can a condensing unit go in a side yard setback?
Again, I think it might have to, depending on the scenario.
Right, Donna, you want central air.
Put it in the attic.
No.
Yeah, a, a, a small three-ton air handler unit or compressor under RX could, because it goes on a pad, it could be considered a structure. Was it your intent to not allow those? Food for thought, I guess.
Yeah, but see, in that situation you have right there, there's no hardship because there's nothing preventing them from putting it in the back of the house.
Or the right, or the right side. There's, there's room on the right side.
So this is where we're going.
It will cost me $500 more dollars.
Yeah, we know, we had a guy that came in, wanted a shed with his pool, and we turned him down, and he was upset, and he said, "What's the hardship?"
I have, you know, I... It gets, you know, it's really hot in my house, and the only place I can put, you know, my, my, my panels on this side of the house, if I put it back here, I have to move my whole panel.
Or they don't want a condenser right next to their deck, I know.
So those are the types of questions we get. So to avoid potential interpretations of what a ZBA is authorized or not authorized to do, is there a way to deal with this on the regulatory side? You know, if the town's getting 60, I'm talking, the town's getting 60 applications over a five-year period to put generators in a side yard setback, are the regs broken, or should everybody just move their generators on their lot? Or is there a reason to provide a little bit of flexibility? You know, in Donna's scenario, this, if someone asks for a three-car garage and wanted to go within two feet of a side yard setback because they own three cars, that, you know, that's not a hardship, and I wouldn't make a recommendation to change the regs, but, you know, when all of, a lot of these homes on the smaller lots were built, you know, we had less stuff.
We didn't have central air, we didn't have generators.
Right.
We still don't.
I had a central air.
Yeah, but people buy them, do, that's what they want.
Yeah, that's what they want.
You know, and they're buying those houses.
I grew up in a generation where you're happy if you got a new fan. And the window opened and your fan went in it, and maybe you got an oscillating fan in that one, state-of-the-art. But again, these are the kind of...
Cute stories.
The funky nature of our, our regulations and how the utilization of a lot has evolved from putting the Model T in that back small garage and your Old DB housing to, you know, trying to fit the lawnmower, the kayaks, the kids' bikes, and your car in the garage?
The garage's suburban.
The question too, on a lot like this, where can I keep stuff? If I have snowmobiles, where can I park my trailer with snowmobiles?
The preference would be behind the house. The first preference would be not visible to everybody from the street.
There's some language in your zoning code that talks about the storage of trailers.
What does it say?
Boats, campers, and motor vehicles. The language in your code says it shall not be stored in a front yard, side yard, or rear yard, given a specific, or, and I'm paraphrasing, given the dimension of the zone.
So maybe just...
There's a diagram that shows a front yard being everything in front of your house, a side yard being everything on the sides of your house, and the rear yard being everything behind your house.
Oh, not the setbacks, just the actual yards.
So...
So you have to have it in a structure?
That's, that's perhaps one interpretation. Council has advised us that, given the nature of the way the regulation is written and the reference to the dimension, that the intent is the dimension of the yard for the side yard, rear yard, setback. But some of the members have historic knowledge, was it your intent to never allow someone to put, you know, they're small. You know, my neighbor has one, he's got two snowmobiles, it's, it's not much bigger than, it's like two of these tables. Was it the intent of the commission at one point in time, Dave, I don't know if you have that historic recall, to not allow someone to have that trailer anywhere on their property?
We need Jimmy Gallagher.
You know, if I bought a bass boat from Cabellus, can I store it on my lot?
All right, as long as it's out of sight of the neighbors, unless you're maintaining it.
So maybe the interventions, like the shed, it can't be in the front yard.
Right.
It can be in a side yard, but not in a setback, and it can be in a rear yard, but not in a setback. Where my driveway stops, right, like this scenario, there, can I put the trailer in the driveway with the boat on it?
I don't think the neighbors would like that. I mean, in fairness, they shouldn't have to look at that, but...
Or what if the driveway goes all the way back to the barn?
Right.
Can I line it up with things? Can I have a boat and snowmobiles and a trailer and a camper all the way down the driveway? I mean...
These are questions we get. You know, I mean, we have one in...
I have, what do you call it, mobile homes that you...
We had a motor home that was parked in this whole driveway, which meant that the person, Donna, your driveway right here, you couldn't pull out because the sightline was blocked.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, I have nowhere to put it other than this driveway because it's on pavement, and I'm not going to park it on my lot. Well, do the regs say they can have that mobile trailer then?
I don't, I don't think that's right, to have it, something like that be staying there.
Registered?
Right.
Driveable?
Right.
A motor vehicle.
How much a year drive that takes you?
It's not that, it's that you're, the things that you're storing is what I'm getting at, the...
But what, what is it storing and what is it parked there?
We had a house...
The snowmobiles, the boats.
And I agree with you.
When you're stuck where they worked on cars in the driveway, they had like four cars in the driveway under permanent kind of disarray.
So again, I told you I didn't want to take, my, my part was 10 minutes, you've been discussing.
Oh, yeah.
But these are the little quirky things we're getting into in our regulation. We don't want to get bogged down in them, but we also don't want to, as we modify the language a little bit, make an incorrect representation of, no, 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 Jamie, the regs were originally written that, to Mike's point, that if you had a trailer or snowmobiles, they had to be in a garage. And if you were gonna intend to store them on their lot, they're not allowed to be, so you have to put them at many storage.
Or under your deck, like my little boat.
Our reg also allows the zoning enforcement officer to issue a permit.
Well, what's unique in our regulations is that, and one of the reasons that council came to the conclusion they did, is in the yard, in the yard explanation, it also allowed the zoning permit to be issued if the unit was stored for more than six months, you needed a zoning permit, and it had to be properly screened. So to Mike's point, if it had to be in a structure, you wouldn't need a zoning permit, and there'd be no reference to properly screened and be inside a structure, so I think, you know, I'm relatively confident that interpretation is, is a reference to a setback for a yard, side yard, front yard group. I guess to conclude, if I can conclude some summaries, there's still a strong sentiment to, we'll say, keep the front yard sacred.
The smaller lots.
On the smaller lots, and then potentially when we get into the four-acre zone, that, I mean, look at, if you had a house 400 feet off the property and someone wanted to build a barn 200 feet off the property, our regs right now would prohibit that, even if I owned 100 acres.
And no, and I think most of us would be okay with that, the barn being in front, in that case. So does that a special...
Again, I worked in another community that has a lot of larger estate kind of farm settings, and they were concerned about the construction of barns in a less historical nature. You know, everybody, you know, you talked about someone in the 40s, he built the barn, he built the barn, it was made of wood, it had a decent roof pitch, it had clapboards or cedar shakes on it, it didn't have texture 111 on it, and there was no such thing as a steel butler. So in that community, anything that's over 400 square feet requires a special permit and requires architectural review. And they're, in some instances, okay with steel buildings, so long as they're not visible from the street. But if they're in a historic area or have some architectural vernacular that the area's associated with, they have required the applicant to not do a butler building, but to build a traditional barn. And most people understand this. We also, as we move on, to look at that type of thing.
That's nothing.
Because I know aesthetics and, and the way the neighborhoods look are very important to, to the residents.
Because you're driving through West Hartford, I know, you know, they definitely have some cars that are parked like parallel to the street.
To get more in, to get more cars.
Yeah, if you go down Ridgewood, you know, they have cars, you know, and I don't know that we would allow that or not.
West Hartford actually does not allow cars to be parked on the street.
What's the further, West Hartford doesn't allow you to park cars on your grass, that's in the zoning regs.
Yeah, so that's...
That's what they do.
That was one of the biggest enforcement...
Or on the street.
Cases we don't.
Yeah.
But they, in Ridgewood, they have these cars that are parked right next to the, to the street. They're gonna put gravel, is that making it legal there?
It's hard surface, so they're reg three.
Is it from the house or local street?
And I believe West Hartford adopted that zoning code for public safety. And as since 3:00 in the morning, driving down the street, there should be no cars on it. And if there are...
You know, the parking on the street is actually town ordinance, it's forced by the police, it's not the zoning.
But that's, it's for public safety. I'm not recommending we do that in Simsbury. But there are unique, sometimes when people drive in certain areas, like, wow, this is, cars on the street, there's no one parked in the front yard, this is, this is a really negative, sometimes it's driven by regulations. And I do appreciate driving around some areas of town that they're, you know, the front yards don't have all these things. And then, we'll, we'll broach the subject matter a little bit later, but we'll also need to start a discussion on temporary structures. You know, something that didn't readily exist 10 or 15 years ago, but readily exists now because you can go to, you know, Ocean State Job Lot or BJ's and for a few hundred dollars buy a 10 by 20 structure with your car. Your in, or your lawnmower in, or your woodpile under, or your snowmobiles, or your snowmobile trailer, or...
Under my deck.
It's time for Mike to go to the...
Yes.
She made a motion, Mike.
I would love to make one.
All in favor? Close.